All right. Good evening, everyone. I ask that you would please rise as Pastor Roger Satsan for Life Church. Please descend in vocation, followed by the Pledge of Independence.
Would you pray with me? Lord Jesus, first off, I want to thank you for the opportunity to pray with and for these men and women who are serving the city of Fergus Falls and its people. Lord, my prayer today is that you would bless each of them, bless their families, and draw each of us into a deeper relationship with you. You said, "You're the vine and we're the branches, and apart from you, we can do nothing." So help us abide in you. Holy Spirit, I invite you to come and speak in and through each person here. Father God, may your will be done and may you be glorified. Lord, I pray especially for those people in our city who feel like they have no hope, feel like no one cares, and they're just in a really dark place. Lord, may we be your hands and feet, may we find creative and beautiful ways to show your love to those people. I pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is 5:30, January 17th, 2023, and we'll call this meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. First item of business this evening is the approval of the agenda, and I will call on our city administrator, Andrew Brumsepp. Good evening, Andrew.
Good evening, Your Honor, council members. We don't have any changes from staff this evening to the agenda.
Hearing no changes, I would entertain a motion to adopt the amended agenda as presented.
I would offer that.
Thank you, Tom.
I'll second.
Thank you, Jim. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. That motion carries. We have no public hearings, bids to award, or petitions or communications this evening, which brings us to the consent agenda. There are ten items on the consent agenda. If anyone would like to discuss any of those items individually, we can remove them. Anthony?
May I do one and eight?
One and eight. Anyone else have anything else they'd like to remove for consideration? I would look for a resolution.
Mayor Ben?
Oh, yeah. I would also, uh, number one.
Number one, okay. We have number one and number eight off, which would leave us eight remaining items, and I, we can pass those through a single resolution if someone would like to offer that.
I'll make them.
Thank you, Brumsepp. Thank you, Scott. Roll call.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Item number one is a motion approving the minutes from January 3rd, 2023 City Council Meeting and the January 11th, 2023 Committee, the whole meeting. Both Anthony and Al, I believe, wanted to make a comment or a correction.
Yeah, it was a, I wonder if I, my comment was more than on the approval of the agenda. Obviously, we talk about, um, you know, that earlier tonight at an open forum, a point was addressed, um, about having the new council seated immediately. I wonder if we can put language in there that actually cites the city code of 31.25.
31.25, okay.
To tie the two, um, together. And then equally, yeah, I'd also, if possible, I'd like the actual language. Because, uh, one thing that, within the language of 3125, it says, "At its first regular meeting in January, the council shall," in the order herein stated, "and prior to commencing its regular order of business reorganized by..." And, uh, you know, the minutes states that the Fergus Falls City Council held a regular meeting on Tuesday, January the 3rd. The definition in the code of a regular meeting is one that is held on the 1st and the 3rd Mondays of each month. And I know it's being pedantic about words, but the first regular and prior to commencing seem to be important words. So I'd like those reflected in the minutes, please.
Thank you, Anthony. Al, did you have something to add?
Yes, I did. Looking under the open forum section, uh, where it had mentioned, and I know that there was a discussion about what had been done in the past with that example that Anthony had brought up with seating the, the new council ahead of time and not having the old council vote. Looking at the past three election, um, agendas and minutes after the last three elections back in 17, 19, and 21, um, in, excuse me, in 2017 and in 2019, the new council was seated right away, and then business was begun in 2021. I believe there was no change in council, so it just went on as normal business. As it was stated in the, at the meeting, that it was done as long as you can remember, that it was done with the old council voting on, uh, issues, uh, or business, you know, prior to the swearing-in of a new council. I'd also like to make a, uh, comment. Me personally, I don't care about that. What I do care is I want the code followed. If we can follow a code, we have one. I believe we should follow it if we can. And, uh, that kind of, I just want to clarify that, that as, as we look into those past minutes and agendas, that the, uh, the new council was sworn in in those two elections out of the last three. Thank you.
Thank you, Al. Any other additions or to those minutes? Got that, then, that information? Okay, thanks. Would someone like to offer a motion to approve the minutes?
I can make that.
Thank you, Anthony. Someone like to second that? Thank you. Scott, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Those amended minutes are approved. Item number eight is a resolution accepting L, I'm sorry, JLG Architects Professional Service Proposal for Design Development Final Design and Construction Administration in the amount of $681,820 for Public Improvement 9504, the Aquatics Center. Anthony?
My question was a follow-up. I'd asked if city staff could clarify that there are no covenants or restrictions on the property, so I would hate to spend $600,000 or $700,000 and then find that we can't do something, though.
Certainly. Claire?
I can clarify, there are no covenants. You did pull those D's. Thank you for asking.
Thank you.
Thank you. Someone like to offer a resolution?
I can make that.
I'll second it, Charlie.
Resolution is settled. Further questions? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Under Ordinance and Resolutions, uh, first item of business is a second reading of ordinance 34-8 series dealing with shoreline management. This has been before the council, it's had its first reading. If anyone has any questions, we can direct them to Claire Beck or our city attorney. See none? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That ordinance is approved. Item number two is a resolution approving the petition of membership to the Charter Commission, and I would call on city attorney Rolf Nicomal.
Thank you. We have a charter commission that is in charge of the charter, which is our constitution, and it is comprised of 14 members. They serve for four-year terms, and they serve staggered terms. So every couple of years, we have to reappoint charter commission members. They are appointed by the chief judge of the judicial district. They are not, and we, the council and the charter commission, can make recommendations to the chief judge, but the chief judge retains full authority to appoint whoever the chief judge wants. Be that as it may, it's oftentimes helpful for the charter commission to recommend to the city council proposed members, and it's also helpful for the city council to review those members, and if you agree with the charter commission, uh, to pass a resolution that shows parity between the charter commission and the city council on the appointment of new charter commission members. If you disagree with the charter commission as to their proposed slate of candidates, you have the right to submit your own slate of candidates as well. And then the chief judge can make a decision to either accept one slate, accept the other slate, or accept neither slate. So, uh, it's oftentimes easier for the judge to know that the charter commission is on, on, on board with the council, and the charter commission's coming forward with a, with a proposed list of reappoint, or new appointees to the charter commission, and that is the proposed resolution before you. If you agree with it, you should offer this resolution, pass it by five yes votes, and I will then submit the petition to the court, and with a little bit of luck, the chief judge will agree with us and issue its order appointing charter commission members within a couple weeks.
Thank you for that, Rolf.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Is there term limits on the charter commission members? I mean, how many term limits? Or a term limit?
They, for four-year terms, but there is no term limits on charter commission members. They can do it as many times as you're, as they wish.
Someone like to, uh...
I can make that, Your Honor.
Offer that? Thank you, Anthony.
I'll second.
Scott? We have a resolution and a second. Any discussion?
Just for the record, Your Honor, Bill just pointed out correctly that the address listed for one of these members is incorrect, so, um, what we actually submit to the chief judge may look a little bit different. Sarah Duffy is, is no longer assigned at the address listed, so we'll just have to update that. The document will look slightly different, but these are the names that will be going forward if the council approves.
Can I ask, though, that she continues to be a resident?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so we have a resolution. Any further questions, comments, discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Item number three is a resolution approving a lobbyist contract with Joel Carlson, and I will call on city administrator Andrew Brumsepp.
Thank you, Your Honor, council members. The city's been working with Joel Carlson as our lobbyist in St. Paul for over 20 years. At the end of 2022, a two-year contract expired, and it's that time of the biennium that we have to renew the contract if we want to continue working with Joel in St. Paul. He is keeping his rate the same as it was in year two of our last contract. He did reduce it significantly during COVID times, given the uncertainty of everybody's budgets. But we're looking at a proposed two-year contract. The annual contract rate is $43,420 spread out over the year. The Legislative Committee discussed this, and we feel that Joel has done a good job for us, and, um, the $43,000, while a significant investment in these services, has yielded several million in return, whether it be through bonding or other funding opportunities from St. Paul. So, being three hours away, it's hard to have a staff person there at a frequent enough basis to be truly effective throughout that process, making it pretty important to have somebody with boots on the ground representing our interests. So, that's the item before you this evening, is a two-year contract with Joel Carlson, $43,420 in year one and in year two.
Thank you. Andrew? Someone like to offer that?
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Thank you.
I'll second that and say that, yeah, I totally agree with what Andrew said about Joel being a great investment. I mean, he has gotten, he has gotten us a lot of resources and money, and he works hard, and he's great to work with, so.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. Item number four is a resolution adopting the city's legislative priorities. As Andrew mentioned, Legislative Committee has met recently. Committee consists of, yeah, myself, Anthony, Tom, and city administrator, so, um, if they have something to weigh in, but Andrew, do you want to just give an overview of what those legislative priorities are?
Yeah, I will. Thank you, Your Honor, council members. The committee had a chance to meet here about a week and a half ago, and, and there's probably some updates since that I'll defer to my colleagues on, but, um, in no particular order, we came up with a list of five priorities for consideration by the council, um, one being the additional $3 million in sales tax authorization for the Aquatics Center. We had $3 million that stalled out in the tax bill last year. We put the question to the voters with the higher amount, knowing that we'd have to come back and get the legislative authorization for the additional $3 million after the fact. The $5.2 million bonding request that we approved at our last council meeting, which includes benefits to the dairy property and Old Smokey, a sales and use tax exemption for a proposed economic development project in the community, which we're referring to as Project 116. We're not public with that project at this point in time, but there are some opportunities this legislative session to help that project move along. The Legislative Committee talked about, um, a potential request for additional cash related to RTC holding costs. When the city, um, was gifted the RTC back in 2007, we had $1 million from the state given to us for holding costs. That's upkeep, maintenance, anything like that that happens, and over the years, that money has slowly, um, been spent, and we're looking to hopefully replenish that, given the fact that there's such a surplus in the legislature this year. And then finally, um, work had started on this last session. We didn't get to the finish line on anything because of the, um, everything stalling out, but a local government aid or LGA adjustment for the coal plant closure and it being a coal community, there's been a lot of receptiveness from state legislature, state legislators for communities like ours that, uh, because of regulation have lost coal plants, and as a result, have lost significant tax base and, and other detriments to the community. So looking at trying to, uh, provide additional resources to our community to help fill that funding gap or that tax base loss related to the closure of the plant. Again, I mentioned that, um, there's a major surplus, $19 billion surplus, so I think the city should stand prepared if the opportunity arises at the 11th hour to put something forward to do that, and I think the city is prepared to do that, so I encourage all of you to continue to be thinking about what that may look like. And then finally, this will be at the tail end of our agenda tonight as well, but the committee has talked about having a discussion on roads and funding for roads, because unfortunately, there are limited funding opportunities for local streets in a city at the legislative level. You know, a lot of folks here that were doing bonding requests, and were looking for this money and that money, and the obvious place that the mind goes is, why aren't we getting money for streets, right? Because our streets are in need. These legislative programs unfortunately haven't, um, gone down the road of funding local streets. We talked at the committee of the whole last week about the state aid system and how those funds operate, but, uh, we have not seen communities be real successful in looking for funding for local roads within the communities. So, um, I don't think that's a winning strategy. Just want to have that conversation here in a little while. And the other thing I'll mention related to roads is there's organizations like the League of Minnesota Cities, the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, that are always talking about, um, the formulas and funding formulas for transportation and roads. So we would benefit from those efforts, but they're not ever getting to the point where individual cities are going to make the, the benefit, um, through those conversations. So, anyway, those are the legislative priorities as the Legislative Committee has discussed. I know the rest of the group had a nice meeting with our local legislator yesterday, and I don't know if any of them have anything to add prior to council action.
Yeah, we did. We met with Senator Rasmussen yesterday. Anthony, would you like to add anything?
I think Jordan was, um, positive, um, and obviously will be supportive, um, obviously reminded us that as, as much as there is a $19 billion surplus, there is also probably going to be, you know, $19 billion worth of requests, and that not every project necessarily will get funded. But I think, you know, um, he seems overall positive. I mean, we, we spoke, um, a lot about the dairy property, uh, being, you know, as much of, as anything as a priority to get that funded, because that would, that has a lot of positives for it in the sense that it would add to housing, which is obviously a shortage for, for most communities. And I think, you know, obviously the, inverted commas, the simple one hopefully should be the sales tax authorization. I mean, he doesn't see any challenges particularly on that, but equally says, until you get, you know, the fat lady sings, you're not, you're not done, so. But it was, it was good. The only one that he was cautious about was RTC holding costs as, as being, you know, that that could detract from, um, you know, dollars that, that go to something else within the community. So, but all in all, he was positive.
Thanks, Andrew. Yeah, or Anthony, I'm sorry, and, uh, yeah, all in all, I've just echoed, it's a positive meeting, it's going to, um, most likely be a positive session, uh, it's a surplus, so we look forward to getting a lot done down there. Yeah, Scott?
As you're beginning to speak about this, Ben, you said we met with Jordan, and I was just wondering what, who the people were?
The Legislative Committee.
So it was you and Anthony and?
Tom.
I was on the phone.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, that's good. Thank you.
And I, I believe Scott is going to be down at Coalition's Legislative Action Day, too, if any of the other council members happen to. I think it's next week, isn't it already?
Next Wednesday, the 25th.
Tuesday and Wednesday, Wednesday? So if anyone's down there, that's a day that the Coalition, um, member cities all meet as a group and then individually with their legislators. So we have our list of legislative priorities. If anyone has any, um, thing to, I guess we should act on them on now. Would someone like to offer a resolution on making these official priorities?
I'll offer that.
Brent? Thank you. Scott, any further discussion, questions? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. So now we have our legislative priorities. Scott's going to be down there, we'll all be down there at different times, so, um, if you get a chance, talk to your, talk to our legislators.
Yeah, Your Honor, council members.
Let Joel know if you're going to be down there.
Yeah, I was just going to say, if you want Joel to schedule meetings or to do anything, just, you just have to reach out, and I can coordinate that, or he can, or whatever you want to do, so.
Thank you. Item number five is a resolution authorizing staff to retain the services of a consultant at Baker Tilly regarding the application for tax increment financing for FM Bank. We discussed this at the prior council meeting as well as at the committee of the whole. If there's any questions, Claire, do you have anything to, to add to this from last Wednesday?
I, I just have a question. What is the cost to, for Baker and Tilly? What is the cost for that?
The city?
Yeah.
Zero.
Okay.
It's, it's on the applicant.
Okay.
Would be, um...
That's right.
Would be the one. That's accurate, correct?
That's accurate. Yeah, the applicant pays $12,000 for kind of holding an escrow, and then...
Fifteen, isn't it?
Fifteen, yes, thank you. And as the project unfolds and as Baker Tilly works, that we use that money then to pay them. The money that is not used does get returned.
But it's, yeah, the city's not on the hook for this portion of any project until, any project potentially would go forward. Someone like to offer a resolution?
I'll offer that, and then I have a comment, Your Honor.
Anthony? Do you want to second that?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jim. Go ahead, Anthony.
I would, I would say as much as obviously it's a, a good project, but I think, you know, they obviously cited three and a half years, and I think that, and then within the language, there's something about potentially doubling that. I would like to see it at least consolidated to three and a half years so that we can get it actually on to the, the property tax roll. But I think cleaning up, you know, replacing ShopCo with something nicer. And, and the reason I kind of say that is because there's the potential that if FM Bank move over there, then there's going to be another old building on a corner, and, you know, will that property then come back and ask for some TIF to do something with that building as well? So, I think we should be cognizant of what they, they're going to vacate a, a corner as much as they're going to tidy up one corner, they're going to leave us with another corner that's not quite as pretty.
So you're just, are you saying like as we evaluate?
Yeah.
When Baker Tilly comes back?
When it comes back, yeah.
We just keep in mind that you want to keep the tax increment period as short as possible. Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. Uh, next would be a resolution pertaining to the initiation of Public Improvement 5362, which is the Fur and Freiberg Avenue Roundabout Improvement Project, and accept the Otter Tail Counties Agreement for the Intersection Improvement for County State Aid Highway 1 and Freiberg Avenue. We will call on our city engineer, Brian Yvaro. Good evening, Brian.
Thank you. Good evening, Your Honor, members of the council. Yes, at the last committee of the whole, I requested two things. That would be to initiate Public Improvement 5362 and to accept Otter Tail Counties Agreement for this intersection improvement for Sound 1 and Freiberg Avenue, which is MSAD State Route 126. Also, like contained in there, there was a corporate agreement. I can go over, but in, in general, where the county's requesting, I'll run through the cost of the local share, the other two shares would be, uh, city, that would be funded through construction state aid. So since that meeting, I did send out a, a map, which is our official municipal state aid route map. That's for viewing. Like I had mentioned, any routes designated on those are where the capability of our construction state aid funds can be spent on. I do have a three-page list, but in general, everything like pavement improvements, some storm mark hydraulics, uh, right-of-way engineering and everything are applicable through our construction state aid amounts, less, uh, which one thing is not really, is more enhanced, like streetscape features, like decorative, uh, trashcans, retaining walls, things of that nature, uh, are not fundable, only a small percent with this, with the state aid funds. I did hand out, too, as well, a map for you, too, other than our state aid route. This is a little bit of customized map I made. This is, this map illustrates, um, current federal and state aid projects we have on the boards right now or initiated. I just wanted notes, of the three, we have Union Avenue that's listed, uh, that was on the consent agenda, that's a state transportation program, federal aid funds, 2022. Broadway is in 2023. I wanted to note, we did have Randolph on a state aid project only, uh, however, the state did approach me indicating they had additional $600,000 federal aid funds. Given the amount of design we had and the quick turnaround, I added Randolph onto the Broadway project. And then the next programmed is Pebble Lake Road, Washington, Freiberg. That's, that's, uh, programmed in STIP 2026. We do have some other projects, you know, color-coded areas that are just purely state aid fund construction funds. I do have some dashed lines as well, Cleveland Avenue, Union Avenue South, Downtown Corridor, those projects are not initiated, but those are kind of in on the horizon as well. With all of that, any questions you might have in regards to this topic and the requested action at hand?
So just for the people viewing at home and in the audience, could you just go over the different color codes real quick again on this map that's on the board?
Yeah, uh, we can start off in, in the, let's just say, in the upper left. That's a Mendot project, that's the I-94 Bridge Replacement Project consisting of about three, three roundabouts. That's scheduled about 2027. The city will have their estimations of about $2 million in cost participation, primarily pavement needs associated with that project. However, they might have been set project, it's still unknown, but we will have some cost shares with it. Also mentioned, like I said, on Broadway, there in yellow, and then the Randolph, that's state transportation, federal aid 2023. As you go more to the east, Union in red, uh, that's the current, uh, project, we're going to be trying to go out for rebids here as well. And if you go farther to the east, I think that's a very light blue Freiberg Avenue. And if you go down the page and share, then Pebble, Pebble Lake Road is also one project, part of, uh, state transportation, federal aid 2026. We do have Stanton Avenue, that is initiated, that's a block from Broadway to Union Avenue, that is not federal funds, that's purely state aid funds, uh, going to fund a portion of the payments. We will be coming back once we finish the appraisals with all of our other funding packages, with special assessments and everything as well. special assessments and everything as well. But like I said, I did some dashed lines, some other areas we have not initiated yet, but that we have been looking at. And I'm just pointing them out right now. But as I noted on here, these are purely state and federal aid. Our local levy projects and everything are not shown on this map. And one project I don't have shown on there is a Union Avenue Bridge. That's been in some years. We're under preliminary, we did preliminary plans submitted to the State Bridge Office and everything. So that process is moving, however, not as fast as I would like. But it is a pretty big project and it's looking in regards to Union Avenue Bridge project. That's going to be a full deck replacement instead of a full bridge replacement at this time. So some of the forensics initial investigation we did on the pilings and everything are very, very positive for this project. So.
Thank you. Thank you, Brian. So we had a robust discussion on Wednesday morning. So what would the council, what was the wishes of the council regarding the roundabout on Fur and Freiberg Avenue?
Obviously, I was the one that brought it up. So, I mean, I, obviously for the $730,000, that would be our share of the roundabout. Um, there's, there's certainly some roads on here that I would sooner rather see us put money in. Union Avenue South, particularly, you know, at the junction from Alcott, that's a really rough area. And, you know, going along there and, and from, and Kevore from Union to Cascade, you know, that, that street's, you know, also pretty rough. And I think that, you know, we don't have to make a decision tonight on a, on a roundabout as such. And I think we would be, we would serve the community better to look at some of these white dashed roads and, and put money into that. That's one of the, the hot topics that we're always criticized for is that the roads are bad. I mean, I, I hear that every time you speak to somebody. And I think, you know, three-quarters of a million dollars on doing some of these roads would make a big difference to people's perception of what we do and, and what we're about.
Thanks, Anthony.
I would also like to add to Anthony, if I may?
Yeah, just one second. Now, I just want to, just a quick clarifying question, and we'll come down. You, you mentioned that we have a, we have funds available in our Minnesota state aid pot, if you will. This project is, is the county's doing the engineering? I guess my, here's my question. Is, is, does it get to a point of capacity as far as city staff and some of these roads that don't have partnerships, either federal or state roads, as far as like the engineering work that needs to be done? So it's not just a matter of here's $700,000. Does that come into play? I just thought about that when Anthony was, was asked that question.
To answer your question, yes. It, it certainly does. It does in my decision-making. For instance, some of our local projects, I like reconstructions and everything. I prefer to do those in-house when using state, especially federal aid funds. There's a lot of administration paperwork that goes along with these programs and everything. That's why a lot of it, I try to look at consultants. I have lived with staff members, but that's why I try to look at our local levy funds. For instance, reconstruction, we're looking at Laurel Street, just pretty much northwest, north, northwest of Our Lady of Victory Church that we're looking at presently right now as well and working on.
Sure.
Your honor. We're having discussion before we have a motion.
Sure.
That's not Robert's rules.
Okay. All right. So would someone like to?
I will offer it.
Thank you, Jim. We have a resolution initiating project, Public Improvement 5362. Would someone like to second that? Scott?
Thank you.
Yes.
Al, sorry.
I guess I'm kind of with Anthony on that. You know, the road there, where they're talking about the roundabout, it's a, it's in quite good shape. And now we're going to proceed with digging it up, putting our money into that, and putting other money into it that could be used in the city where there's some pretty rough roads, Cleveland Avenue. I grew up on that road as a kid. And I know that the people coming into work from Woodland Heights would really probably appreciate that in my Ward III if that road was fixed at some point in time. I just think that, you know, somebody can, can, let's say, maybe get by without a roundabout on a road that's in fair, from what I know, is in really good shape compared to these other roads. It's been a hot topic for the election is roads. And I think we could definitely use that elsewhere on these other roads if there's that money for it. I think it should be directed that way. And that's why I feel it should be used for. And I think the people of the third ward would like that, too.
Thanks, Al. Scott?
Our conversation this afternoon, Brian, about this. You told me that the Union is going to be a total reconstruction. Is that not true? That's different than what this is going to be over.
Yes, please.
Rachel's, yes. The Union showing on this map, red, all these state transportation projects.
Correct.
I just want to, these are resurfacing projects. Union South, I got a dash, that we would probably look as a, as a reconstruction because the pavements, everything are too forgotten. Just a note, on Union Avenue, just this area, just for resurfacing and ADA improvements, barring the market or not, but we came in bids at 2.5 million dollars. If we were going to, my opinion, reconstruct the same project limits, it'd be tenfold probably, at least versus.
That's why I wanted to make sure we could hit the numbers.
Yes.
I don't like to see spending this money over here, but it's, that roundabout is needed and that I'm sure the people from that ward understand it very much. I used to live there, so I, but I just wanted to make sure we understood that that project on there is a very expensive project.
Union Avenue South.
It's all good.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you, Scott.
Scott? A little bit just on the process. This is something that we've been essentially drawn into because of the county's desire to build this roundabout. It wasn't something that we went to the county and said, we want this roundabout. Will you please get the ball rolling? They came to us and said, we're going to do this and here's your share. Is that kind of how this plays out? I mean, is it, would that be an accurate way to say this or what?
I can't speak prior to my employment at the city. I, I do know talking from my predecessor. It's been a long-range plan, perhaps not in the transportation. It's been a long-range plan. Hence, in 2016, no, they acquired private property to have adequate right-of-way to do this project. 2020, we did a joint venture for three roundabout studies at Fur, you know, at Dislocation, Union Avenue, and Tower Road. And we pursued funding at this time. But yes, I think the county's come to determination that over all this discussion and planning, now that we have the right-of-way as well, they did demolish a homestead that was, relocated, I think, the garage and demolished a homestead that was on that property. So I think things aligned and hence, I can't speak for them, but they're looking just upon for their share, too, to make this project come to fruition.
And I just would add, unless my, if my memory serves me, when the county brought those three roundabout projects, the one of them, we heard from some of the business community who said, no, like the one by Fur Avenue and Union, I believe, and that we said, absolutely not, we're not in support of that roundabout. And the county scrapped that roundabout. Right. So there was, there was discussion at the three different roundabouts at that time, unless I'm mistaken. But we did have discussion just about the general utility, if you will, of those roundabouts in those situations. But please finish.
Well, to follow up, then, I guess, is there any way the county would even pursue this if we didn't go along with it? I mean, because they've identified it as a priority. They put all those years of work and investment into developing it. Could they go ahead without the city involvement?
I don't want to speak for their behalf, possibly. But however, they have other communities too, where they have these same cooperative share agreements as well. So I couldn't answer. I can certainly make that request to them, but I couldn't answer if they would perceive this or not.
So we do have a resolution and a second. So before we call for that vote, are there any other questions or comments?
I'd just say that I think that, you know, obviously if Union's 2.5, then, you know, for example, the Cascade portion is a lot smaller. And so maybe that's kind of half a million. But I still would just reiterate that, you know, the roads in, in Ferguson, not, not in the best shape. And this is an opportunity to reallocate $750,000 to, towards fixing roads. So.
I would agree with Anthony on that, too. We've got a lot of roads in town. We've got to start someplace. Why can't we start now? We're our second meeting into a different council. I really want to see some changes in our roads. I don't agree that a roundabout is necessary for a perfectly good road. And that was the county's choice and the city's choice back in 16 when they, it was the county's bought that property. You know, that was their choice. And we have to look at our roads now. And like I said, Cleveland Avenue, I don't know what that would cost. But we've got to start someplace. We have to start saving 750,000 here, 800,000 here, 300,000 there. That adds up. And I really want us to be aware of that.
Thanks, Al. Any other questions, comments before we call for the vote? Roll call, please.
Thompson?
No.
Rachel's?
Yes.
Hicks?
No.
Fish?
Yes.
Joe? No. Tommy?
Yes.
Rooper?
Yes.
Freimeyer?
No.
Looks like it's four to four, which I believe that I break the tie. I'll vote in the affirmative. That resolution is approved. Thank you. Thank you, Brian. Item number seven is a resolution approving four months of interest. Yeah. Item number seven, a resolution approving four months of interest-only loan payments for OutState Brewing. Bill Sonmore. Do you want to speak at all to it, Anthony?
You can do it, Bill.
Okay. You'll chime in if I miss something.
Good evening, council, mayor. Before you, the city has received a request from OutState Brewing to allow them to make interest-only payments for the months of January, February, March, and April of 2023. Just a little history. During COVID, the city did allow that to happen for certain businesses for a time. And so, you know, their argument to us was that we were impacted adversely because of all that, you know, that happened back then. Hoping this is their last time of requesting this. And when we discussed with them about their other lenders, the banks and another company that is their lenders, the thought is that they are going to allow interest-only payments as well during that time. So we bring that before you tonight to see if that's something you're interested in. They are current on that loan. They did make their January interest-only payment in anticipation of this. Now, if you were to turn that down, then we'd go back and, you know, collect principal from them, too. But that's where we're standing as of today. It was an original loan of 250,000. The current balance as of the end of December of 2022 is 171,215. So.
Thanks.
Anthony, did I miss anything? Anthony and I and Jill Hansen from Community Development, we met with them last week.
I think they have a, you know, typically, obviously, the, you know, Q1 winter season is tough for, you know, their business. And as Bill said, they've, they're setting up some agreements on distribution that hopefully will give them better cash flow going forward. And they're also in consultation with the bank on some of those things as well.
You'd like to offer that resolution?
I'll make that resolution, sorry.
Thanks, Anthony.
Yep.
Second, Brent. Further discussion, questions for?
I got.
Yeah, please, Scott.
In their agreement, in the COVID part of it, did they change, did they ask for this in the future possibly, or is that?
No, they didn't. We didn't set that up back in 20 or 21 about coming back in the future.
Did they talk about their other creditors?
No, go ahead.
Their other creditors and are their bills all paid for everything? I mean, the construction projects I just got done maybe what, two years ago? Is that all taken care of, you know? Or is that something I don't get to ask?
I don't think I even know the answer to that.
I know, but I just, there's, there's been some talk. And I just want to see, before I start saying, I'm just going to give you interest only, it's like, you know, I'm not in, I'm not.
We have met with the bank in the past as well. We didn't meet with them last week.
Yep.
We had correspondence that, because we wanted to know, are the other lenders looking at going interest-only, too? You know, if the city's going to look at that. So, yeah, I mean, as far as I know, you know, everything is financed either through the bank or through us.
And in general, like, they're current according to the, to their statements.
I understand that. It's just that they're asking for, I mean, I could just say, I'm a businessman also. If I, I'd love to have some interest only if that was the case, but I never did, you know?
Right.
It's just part of being business.
We should, we should also state that the, it's basically the four months that our interest only get tacked on to the end. So.
I understand.
It's about cash flow.
The payment at the end goes up higher, which, of course, the hope is that they're more profitable at that time, they're able to pay that off at the end without refinancing it again. But that's.
Any other discussions before we?
Well, yes, Al.
I guess what is, what, what aren't they, would they be paying? I mean, if it's interest only, what is, what is the portion that they're, what is the amount that they're not paying?
That's where I wish Jill was here. She knows those amortizations. Let me, let me look.
Sorry about a tough question.
So maybe around $2,800 a month is the principal portion.
Yeah.
Interest being like 730 some. So they'd be making the $700 payment, but not the $2,800 for those four months.
Okay.
Good question. And I'm glad I had that in the package.
Thanks, Bill. I, I get, and you said this was done once before during COVID?
During COVID, yeah.
Okay. And it wasn't done anytime?
And then we extended that at one time. We, we did it during COVID as a program, as the council. And then I think they came back individually and requested an extension, and we granted it at that time.
How long was the extension? Do you remember? Six months if I remember, but I might, it was six months, I thought, but I might be wrong. Four months?
Eight, let's see. Okay, during COVID, we deferred three or four months completely. Principal and interest payments were completely deferred during COVID. Then we came back later in November of 20, and then we had eight months of interest-only payments. See if this accountant can count.
Yeah, you're doing good.
Eight months of, um, interest only, then back on for principal and interest, and then coming back now for four.
Does this seem like a pattern?
It's a, it's, it definitely is a seasonal issue. It's, it's a cash flow issue in this time of year when they don't have the sales.
And I understand that. Yes, Brent?
When we did this once before, I can't remember who I was talking to, where do we sit in line on?
Position?
Yeah.
I think we're third position. Is that right, Tara? Yeah.
Now, when it comes down to it, if this business were to fail, how, what are the opportunities that we'd actually receive any money back on it, being in the third position?
I can't speak off the top of my head, but probably not great.
Not great. Yeah. I mean, at least this way here, we're giving an opportunity to keep them afloat and get something in return. But if we turn around and don't do this, we could end up being in the third position and not getting anything at all.
And that is the, our loans are a gap funding, so we all, we don't have great positions on our loans. You know, it's usually the banks always first. And so that is the purpose of our loans. But Brent makes a good point that it's, you know, we're not in a great standing.
It's unfortunate, but something's better than nothing.
Other, other questions, comments before we call for the vote?
And, and the base of the balance is going down. I mean, you know, we started at 250 and we're down to 171 now. So that's, that's the purpose of doing that interest only.
I don't want to start harsh, but we were business friendly to, to offer them this loan or to give them a loan. But no, if we say no to this, are we, we're not, we're not being business. But we are being still business friendly, but we're not, if we say no, it doesn't mean like we don't want them. It's just that being in business, I mean, it's part of the, first thing you do is pay your bills. And I, I'm going to vote, no, I'm not going to, I'm not going to, because it's.
One of their, and Anthony brought that up, as far as, they did explain to us about their distribution plans that are, you know, some new distribution plans that are appearing to be successful already. So that's encouraging that this should be the last time, that we shouldn't have to. But that was one of their arguments made to us.
All right. So we've got the resolution. Second, last comments?
Roll call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Rachel's?
No.
Hicks?
Yes.
Fish?
Yes.
Joe? Yes.
Tommy? Yes.
Rooper?
Yes.
Freimeyer?
Yes.
A resolution is approved. Under presentation of claims, tonight, we have claims in the amount of $1,813,717.23. If there's any questions, we will direct them to our city finance director.
I'll offer the resolution to pay the bills.
Thank you. Jim, would you like to second that?
I'll take that over.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Questions?
That's what she'd want. Yeah, all eyes are on you.
We'll explain later.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Other than a board committee, department, reports from staff or administrative officers. There is no old or unfinished business that I'm aware of under new business. We have a discussion of roads and roads funding. So I'll call on city administrator Andrew Bremse.
I think, Your Honor, council members may be redundant at this point because we just had a very good discussion on roads. But, you know, a few things I want to add, and I know the legislative committees discussed this, but also, I would offer up before we start, if we want to take a deeper dive into this, we can certainly schedule a work session and do whatever topic or whatever approach the council wants on this. But just to get the discussion started, legislative committee thought it'd be important to dedicate some time to this. Again, prior to knowing that we were going to have the full-fledged discussion earlier, but nonetheless, I think there's opportunities to discuss other local road funding opportunities. I think what council member Kremeyer said resonates with all of us, that we need to make some progress on the roads. We've done a lot of work on the roads over the last few years. It's a never-ending process. We've increased the budget on the local side of things pretty significantly to touch overlays and seal coats and do some of that maintenance on roads prior to them reaching their end-of-life state and enforcing them into the reconstruction category that Brian talks about. But as you see on the map related to the state aid roads, the state aid roads really are our corridor roads. And you look at all the residential streets, and that's where we hear from a lot of people. Why are you doing work on roads that you always work on, right? What about the road in front of my home that hasn't been touched in 30 years? Or that has bumps or, you know, whatever that may be? I know we have issues all across the community related to our roads. And the reality is, you know, when state and federal dollars aren't involved, we have to find a way to fund those locally. And, you know, a tax levy is, is really the, the local mechanism to be able to raise funds to do these types of projects. And we always balance trying to keep property taxes affordable and ensuring that people are comfortable in their homes with having to be able to figure out all of these needs. And as we continue to increase the levy as it relates to those maintenance activities of seal coating and overlaying streets, it's also important to look at ways we can do reconstructions. Because, you know, those are, those are obviously important, but when a road reaches a certain point of its life cycle, those don't do anything, and it's bad, or it's good money spent on bad. So one of the things as a legislative committee that we discussed here a few weeks ago, and I know the council has discussed it previously and maybe parked the discussion, but was what's called a franchise fee. And what that is, is basically, we have agreements that our utility companies can operate within the right of ways of the city. And a lot of communities will have, will put a franchise fee in place in these franchise agreements that these utilities pay a fee to the city to operate within the right of ways. This has become a pretty common street funding mechanism for local governments throughout Minnesota. And we currently have franchise fees in place for our cable providers, but we do not for our electric and gas utility providers. That could be an opportunity for us to implement a franchise fee. Essentially, the companies would pay the city, like I mentioned, to operate within the right of way. They pass that on to the customers. We're not naive to that fact. Last time we discussed this with the council, we were looking at potentially five percent, which is a number that we've seen in other communities like Bemidji, where they charge five percent of the utility bill to the customer. The utility company collects that, pays that back to the city, and those funds are then earmarked or dedicated only to street funding. So it would be a dedicated funding source that doesn't currently exist, that could only be used on streets within the city. So the, as the legislative committee discussed, potential funding opportunities at the legislature and realizing that there's probably not a lot of avenues for that, they wanted to have that discussion again related to franchise fees and see if the council wants to entertain that as a long-term dedicated funding source. Don't have any sort of proposal or specifics or anything like that this evening. Just at a high level, wanted to talk about that being an opportunity to create a fund or revenues so we could do more of these reconstruction projects, take bigger bites out of the pie, address some of these streets that aren't in green on your state aid map, and have that ongoing dedicated funding source as an option and as something the council can use in their decision-making as they address these roads. Because, again, completely agree with the comments made, and we need to put a plan in place. But, you know, without just simply raising the levy to heights that aren't going to be acceptable to anyone in the community, we need to be able to identify either cuts in other areas that can be pushed towards funding streets, which I would, I would argue that we have a very lean budget, and we look at that with a very fine-tooth comb every year, or we need to find other ways to dedicate or create revenue streams. So that's, I think, maybe a discussion. Curious to see what the appetite is or what the reaction to that is. And I think that's maybe a good place. Once we've established what kind of revenues we actually have to deploy a strategy with, we can look to Brian and, and the engineering department to say, here's what we can tackle with this kind of money over these, you know, number of years, and we can start putting a, a real good plan in place that substitutes and complements these state and federal dollars. And you're going to see, you know, even more color on this map that Brian just handed out. You know, to really get ahead of that issue, we got to take a big bite out of the, out of the apple because every year our, our roads go through the same freeze-thaw cycle, and then we see new problem areas pop up all the time. So I'll stop there and, and see if that's a discussion we want to have tonight, or if we want to schedule a work session, or take it in any direction you want, but we wanted to just get that out there.
Sure, just, I just have a comment about the franchise fees. So the staff had been working on the franchise fees for quite some time, over a year if I remember correctly. And like many things that happen, there's a lot of discussion that goes on, and the public doesn't really weigh in until they realize it's going to affect them, right? Like at the last, so we were going on this path of discussing franchise fees and significantly increasing road funding. And at the, you know, the last meeting when we were going to approve this franchise, or vote to approve this franchise fee, the public weighed in, and some of the people that it would affect, and the council stepped back and at that time asked the, you know, direct the staff to not go any further. So is that, that's accurate? So right now, the staff has not been looking at the franchise fees since that discussion. Is that correct?
That is correct, yep. The, it was probably, I don't know, a year ago or a year and a half. I'm not, time escapes me at this point, but it was, you know, the conversation was the economy. People are struggling. There's uncertainty. This isn't the right time. You know, unfortunately, the needs for the, the roads haven't changed, and the, the conversation, I think, has, has gotten even louder about the need to do something about the roads. And so it's, you know, yes, you're correct. We haven't done anything more with it now and wondering if there's an appetite to look at that again, try to revive it, try to, you know, do public education. We now have a communications director on board. We didn't at the time. I think there's a lot of opportunities to do research, education, have conversations around this topic. Ultimately, though, to address that, that desire and meet the goal of improving the streets in the community.
Yeah, and then I want to hear, the one thing I would just say is I think that also we learned some things from the comments we heard of how to modify that so it's maybe a little less, that there's some caps to some of the, you know, bigger users. I mean, there was some pretty significant chunks to businesses that we didn't consider. So, Jim?
I think one of the other things was too, that when the gas company in Otter Tail came in and gave us estimates of what it was cost, they were quite low in their estimates. And I think people were looking at that, went back to their bills, and went back through and said, oh, now you're way off on that. And the other thing now is with gas prices, the way they've gone, just about doubled from last year. Then you're going to add on another four or five percent. I think we're still going to have a lot of people screaming about it. And I guess I personally am not ready to go into that tonight. I would like to have a work session.
Sure. Okay.
I think it would be just, I've talked to Brian about it, and I think about the costs of what these things are. He has no idea what it's going to be yet for Union and, and Lincoln. And so when he finds out kind of what that costs, it'll be, I think that's when we should have the work session. So then they can put some numbers down into it and what it's going to cost us. You think March or April, I said April, and you thought it'd be earlier than that, Brian?
We're hoping after this, so hopefully late February.
So I, March or April would be a great, I think we'd be a good work session. We all, the four of us got elected by saying, we're going to fix these roads.
So would, would the council agree to bring the, for discussion, the franchise fees as part of the overall discussion?
And I'm not saying I'm for franchise. I just think that we need to have the money, what it's going to cost us to fix these roads laying in front of us so we know what avenue to go down. And then if we do a franchise fee, figure out how we can bring it to the public without having that backlash of just.
Certainly.
I mean, there's, there's ways of, everybody knows it's going to cost money. Who's going to have to pay for it now? I mean, that's pretty much after the election. We all explained that it's the taxpayers has to pay for it. And I know, I agree with Al about spending this money over here. You know, I didn't like to see that spent, but it's a project we were kind of committed to, and we need to start after the commitments to work on our next five-year project, is what I think.
Sure, and I'm not advocating for or against franchise fees. I'm just saying, to have that discussion, if we're going to make significant improvements to the roads, I think we have, we at least consider all options, right, before, before we start to.
That's just not the only option.
Certainly, yeah. Did, did I see a hand over here? Tom?
Yeah, to agree with what, with what Scott said. Well, I just totally lost my train of thought. But what I, what I will do is I'll toss out kind of my standard, uh, talking points on this issue for the folks at home. Just as people start to kind of think about it and mull things over is that, I say it all the time, but I mean, we live in, in the worst place on the planet where you could build roads. And building and maintaining roads here is more expensive than pretty much every other place there is. And obviously, we love where we live and want to stay here. And, and if, you know, I hear people talk about the roads and how bad they are. And, you know, honestly, personally, I would, I'd rather slow down and drive around rough spots and slow down. But if it's people's number one priority to fix the roads, we have to pay for it somehow. And I agree with what Andrew said about, we do run a lean budget. There's, we don't, there's no cutting that, that is going to take care of this problem. And so just, just so that people start thinking about it, I mean, if, if we want to have nice, buttery, smooth roads in this environment, then we're going to have to pay for them, and it's going to be expensive. So, and I, I do support the franchise fee. I think it's a great way to do it.
You ever seen Ice Road Truckers?
One of, one of.
And Andrew, I know, you know, you had mentioned about budget being tight and this and that. But I think what is this, what is the city budget now, fifty-three million dollars a year, something like that? Out of that fifty-three million, probably less than one percent would be about two million. I mean, that's less than one percent. There's no way you're saying that there's no way to find that, two million someplace. If it's that, if it's that tight. I mean, when, I still remember when I was very lean and, and I watched every penny go. And I think we need to watch every penny where it's at. Because as I mentioned, a hundred and fifty thousand here, two hundred there, you know, it, it, it hits a million pretty quick. And we can use that for roads. And that's what really people wanted to hear about this last election was the roads, and that was a huge topic. Union Avenue, to be honest, driving into that, if I was coming into our city, you know, it's one of the nicest ways. You've got Lake Alice right there. You're kind of going to come into downtown. You come over a neat bridge, and that road is so rough, it's almost an embarrassment, that it's that rough. And here's, that's one of the main arteries into our city. And I, I, that hurts me. Don't take me as being angry or anything. It's, I have a lot of passion, that I want things nice for our city and our citizens. So, you know, that's where I'm coming from. We really need to look at where every dollar goes. So that's just my comment on it. Thank you.
You need to get him on that budget committee.
And Al, you're going to, and I was, I was the same way because I didn't know, but I served in the budget committee.
So did you just say we're stupid?
But I'm just saying that I know, and I'll stick up for it, that that budget is lean and it's tight. And once, and Bill and I have had this discussion, there is, there is a two million lien out there.
Well, I'll say this. I just, I appreciate the conversation, and we're going to have a work session in March, and we're going to dive into this, and we're going to make significant investment in our roads. I will say this. I think Bill's going to say, two million would represent over a twenty-five percent increase in the tax levy. So that's the, the fifty-three million is not representative of what we can spend on roads. So just, just to be.
I know that. I know that. I'm just saying we're, you know, we've got.
I think that's probably what you were going to say, something along those.
Right.
I was just going to say, there's big parts of the budgets that are related to like the sewer fund, water fund.
Exactly.
You can't spend that on roads.
Exactly.
You all know what I'm thinking.
Yes.
But I look forward to the discussion. Is it, does anyone, is anyone in disagreement that we have an in-depth, deep-dive work session in this sometime in March or April when Brian has some more information? And before the budget committee starts, the budget committee, again, is council member Jobe and council member Rachel's, along with myself, the city administrator. So that start, that work generally typically starts in June. So if we start these discussions in March, we should have some, you know, adequate time. Does that work for everybody?
I have two final comments.
April would work better for me.
April works better for Jim.
April it is.
April it is.
I was just going to say.
Yeah, I got it, weren't you?
No, I, I won't, I, I'll wait till April to jump on Al for that comment. But I will say that the tax levy committee knows their goal now, so we better get to work tomorrow.
Don't worry.
But anyway, no.
That's why I spoiled it.
The, the other comment I was going to make, Your Honor, is if, if anybody has any ideas of, of other revenue streams or other mechanisms or strategies, please bring them to our attention either at this work session or before, so we can, you know, reach out to other communities. The franchise fee discussion was a really hot topic five years ago. I know Bill would come back from seminars or conferences, and another city would adopt it, and Brian would say the same thing from the engineering perspective. That was kind of a hot-button thing five years ago. I'm not aware of any other strategies that cities have deployed or figured out or, or came up with, but we'll always, you know, keep our ears to the road on that. But if, if other folks have ideas, let's get ahead of that and, and start vetting those and working through that sooner than later. So we can, you know, this April work session, we missed this building season. That's probably fine because we have a full load, as Brian shows on this map. But I don't want to keep missing building seasons because, one, the roads are getting worse as they sit, and, two, costs continue to rise. So let's just be aggressive about these conversations and keep that moving.
All right, thank you. Scott?
Just one further comment. When you're looking at putting together the packet or the information that we'll use when it comes to discuss all this stuff in April, during the election season, Nate Cundy was talking a lot about how we communicate this information to the public. And he talked about getting it all online and getting a method for people to be able to look at a map and know when this project is scheduled and that. And so a map like we looked at tonight, very helpful. And if that type of thing was online and people understood how to reach it, you know, whatever it might, small piece of additional information that becomes a part of our work session, then maybe that would be a good time to include that in the discussion.
Thanks, Scott. Yeah, Scott.
She'd just make it easier to find in the voting map.
We'll put it right on the home page.
I always, I was picking on it, so, yes.
Boy, aren't we fortunate to have our new communications director?
Yes, we are.
Oh, man.
Final, final.
I think as well, when, when we have the work session, if we could get kind of like, if, if, I know Brian has got some, you know, road condition kind of scores, so it would be good to kind of have those up. And, and this, the map, the map with the green, when you try to blow it up to actually see the roads that are in green, it gets very blurry. I don't know if we have a better PDF than this one or not.
And that's just the official one from Mind Dot.
Right, yeah. It's like when you blow it up, you, you can't read it very well. I can't, anyway.
Get a new map. They could do it on CSI.
They can, yeah, I'm sure they can. They can solve a murder in like the time we had a council meeting.
They have a communications manager, too.
We'll look at April for a further work session and look forward to that conversation. Seeing no other business for the council.
Sorry, just under announcements, you guys have a work session at four o'clock next Monday with the school district to talk about the proposal related to the elementary school. We also, I know, I'm, I'm sorry for this, but we, if, if you guys are available, we'd like to schedule a special council meeting at three-thirty that day at the school. There is a resolution that we need to approve by the end of the month. This is our last scheduled meeting of the council tonight, so we need to schedule this session. meeting of the council tonight, so we need to schedule this session. And that relates to the $3 million sales tax piece that we talked about earlier with the Aquatic Center. Bill and I worked through that all day, and it's just not, it wasn't at a place where we thought we were comfortable having you guys act on it. So we'll send out more information, but just wanted to make the public aware, and also you, if we can get together at 3:30 that day and have a quick five-minute meeting.
It'll be at the school location.
It'll be at the Otter Community Room at the school. So Lynn will send out an email tomorrow with those details, so you don't have to jot them down right now. But wanted to make the public aware that there may be a, there will be a special meeting next Monday to consider one resolution.
Jim?
I have one announcement. At 12:07 this morning, Barb and I were made great-grandparents.
Congratulations.
Bill, Aubrey Lisa Samuelson, seven pounds, 14 ounces, 22 inches long. Well, both mom and baby are doing well.
Al, doesn't get any better.
So are the grandparents. Great-grandparents. Hard to get that great, isn't it?
Thanks, Jim.
Congratulations.
With that, good news.